And you're assuming Karen that that's David Mead Fox with the David's.
I thought that's who it was, but obviously it's muted, so it's probably not him. I apologize.
All right, and. Okay.
Do you want me to ask him to unmute?
Whoever it is, I'd like to know who's here. I mean, I got Sharon Rule Agar now. She's she's recognized, but I'd like to. If it's David Mead Fox, I'd like to know. I'd like him to unmute. If it's not David Mead Fox, then I don't really.
It's not David Mead Fox.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you identify yourself, please?
David Agar, 56 Kahoon Hollow Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David.
You bet.
Um, all right, let's bring this meeting in order. Any announcements, open session and public comment? All right, um, the announcement, I think most of the members know. But I'll announce it anyway. We are going public meetings in June. However, we will not have a June 1st. Meeting. I'm going to cancel that and we will go to the 15th. But on the 15th, it will be at the senior center and it will be live. We're working out the details at this point with the new equipment as to whether. It will be a joint Zoom meeting as well as a live meeting, or whether or not it's just going to be. Recorded as a Zoom meeting so somebody can see it if they want to. So we're going to have better better input on that. As we get closer to our meeting and other boards have meetings after or before us between June 1st and June 15th. So any questions on that? Great. Um, continuation of the ADU bylaw public hearing. We continued that from the last meeting. Beth made the made the motion. It was approved to continue it. We really didn't have all of the members. To discuss it. So. I will open it up. I'm going to open it up to planning board members first. Basically. Planning board members, this was to change and clear up. The. Potential. Conflict that building inspector had over the definition of whether this was one unit or multiple units. Um, it has been clarified. By me. And I think some I and I know other individuals that the intent on town meeting floor and the intent. As. It was presented to the planning board. That it was. The ADUs were by right with no limitation on numbers governed basically by water septic. The building inspector at the time Victor Staley had a problem. He didn't like. He found conflicting what he felt was conflicting. Items in the bylaw which. Have been. Corrected. And submitted to the planning board. I think the reason this was continued, I had mentioned at the last meeting. I didn't really have any problems with the change. The only problem I'm having in my own mind is. Whether or not to recommend, not recommend, or take no recommend, make no recommendation because I'm still. Having a major problem with the fact that. There is no set numbers. On this bylaw at all. So with that. How would? What's the feeling of the planning board?
Well, Jerry, I think that's at it, at least for me, pretty much similar is that we chose not to act on it. Because we felt the bylaw, at least I certainly felt the bylaw wasn't fully vetted. And it's still filled with holes and inconsistencies and degrities. And I don't think it was a good idea. That's why we backed off endorsing it. So I don't think we should be involving ourselves in fixing it. Because that suggests that we condoned it in the first place, which we didn't. So I'd say no action, at least from my standpoint.
I would go further than that.
Beth?
I would go further than that. I would make a motion that we recommend against.
All right, before you make before you make that.
No, I haven't made the motion. I'm just saying that's what I would do.
Good, okay. And let me just follow through with that train of thought for a moment, since you're taking a little different tact than. David Row is. You're taking. Your reasoning behind that tact is what?
Well, I really believe that not having any numbers associated with the bylaw is detrimental to the town of Wellfleet. So somebody with. The the property could create a cottage colony. As as. In the name of. This bylaw and and rent by the week. And.
I agree with you.
Totally against what we want to see happen. So that's why I say I would recommend against it, not just be silent on it. Because I think it could be egregious.
Okay. We can come back to that. Um, Bonnie.
I just completely disagree with. Beth and Dave. I think. This, all this, I don't think we should revisit this. I think the this proposed the. All this does is make the language more precise. And in fact, I mean, you know, we approved this a year ago and the sky hasn't fallen and we haven't been flooded with. You know, kind of new ADU things. And you know, the question about the numbers, I mean, the numbers are automatically limited. By the size of the lot and the capacities of the septic system. You know, so every ADU has to follow those laws. So it just seems to me that it is. A really bad signal from the planning board to go against. A bylaw that has had none of the scary effects that people were scared about, you know, even with the imprecision. And is maybe a very small contribution to increasing year round housing in this in this town, but every every little bit. Helps solve the crisis and it is a crisis. And I think we have to keep in mind that this is a crisis and it's our responsibility to help solve it. And voting against it just does the opposite in my view.
All right, before I dive into that with my with my input, Olga.
I'm. Excuse me?
I would just thank Bonnie. That's all. Go ahead, Olga.
Um, I'm in favor of these recommendations. I think they're housekeeping and I. Am in support of the bylaw that got overwhelming support at town meeting. Uh, and I question. That people would use it to rent weekly because a it the bylaw requires a year long lease. That is certified at town hall. So I don't know what the alarm is about it. And frankly, I'm living in one now and it's fine. The sky hasn't fallen, as Bonnie said. So I think we should just take care of these housekeeping issues and move it along.
Okay. Let's see. Heard from David, heard from Bonnie. All right. Before I jump.
Can I make a counter? Can I say something, Jerry?
Yeah, we're going to come back to it, David, but yeah, go ahead.
All right, well, this is somewhat to address to both Bonnie's point and Olga's point. Bonnie's point is we haven't seen the sky fall down. Well, it's been a year. Often it takes a year to even plan a project. So we haven't even seen it. Yeah, of course, we haven't seen it. Nothing started yet. So it could take two to five years for the implications for this to play out. In respect to Olga's concern, as far as town hall leasing, don't hold your breath that policing is going to stop this. We've had a bylaw on the books about overbuilding in the seashore for 20 years. And the building inspector signed off on a 5,000 square foot building, completely illegal and signed off by the town. Records stand on that. So don't hold your hat that, oh, we have enforcement. That's garbage.
Okay. Planning board members, you've got all your thoughts at this moment. Sharon. And David, but I mean Sharon, I'm going to give you the lead. No offense, David. Anything you want to, since you and David are the only ones, anything you want to add to this, Sharon?
Um, it's just only that I I wasn't able to attend the first meeting and then I. And I and I thought it was just really a kind of a cut and dry sort of thing. It's just housekeeping. And then I watched the video and I was really surprised to see, you know, all these old arguments coming back up and. You know, I I think, I mean, this was a this was a bylaw that was. Unanimously, I mean, I didn't see you raise your hand, Jerry. Maybe you you broke the unanimity, but. You know, everyone who was there voted for it and. I just feel like it's the will of the town. And I also feel like I spoke with the building commissioner. And, um, you know, he has had interest. He said overwhelmingly, the interest is from families. Who would like to build a small ADU on their property for family members. Which is our hope, really. So and he's very, I mean, I understand Dave's. Worry that, you know, enforcement has not been very effective, but. He's he's really working it. So in any case, I think at this point I I urge you to. You know, you don't have to recommend it. You can vote, you can recommend against it, but. You know, I just assumed you took no recommendation and. I think this is a done deal.
Okay. David Agar, anything? All right, I'm assuming none. All right, I don't think anybody else is out there that wants to speak to this. Okay. I agree with Sharon. On on one of the statements is, I think regardless of where the planning board goes. This is going to pass on town meeting floor. And my thoughts. My personal thoughts on on it is that. Quite frankly, I know it's going to pass on town meeting floor. However. That's still. And it's going to pass on town meeting floor whether the planning board. I would prefer the planning board take no recommendation rather than vote against it. Um, but that that will come out on a vote. My concerns. Are consistent. With the original. Feelings that the planning board had when I made the presentation on town meeting floor is that we are the planning. Board and myself personally is not against ADUs. My concern with it is and has always been the numbers. So that's one of the reasons when I first learned from Victor. That he was having a problem with the definition was going to and was going to hold it to one unit only. I got on the backup. Got him a copy of the report I made on town meeting floor, confirmed that the planning board had a public hearing. And that all of the discussion regarding this article with the board of selectmen. At the public meeting. Was that this was more than one unit by right. And he understood that, and that is why we do not have a problem at the present time. However. That it needs to be. Corrected. Because the way we turn over building inspectors. It needs to be as clear cut as possible. However. I still feel strongly. Enough that presently I am leaning no recommendation. Because I. Consistently feel this bylaw. Needs to be amended. In a number of ways. So. Depending on how the motion goes, which motion. I think I'm speaking now directly to Beth. I don't know how the other I have an idea how the others are going to vote, but. I'd rather see if a motion is made, Beth. Rather than reject it. Um, or voted, no, to vote it down, I'd like to see a motion from planning board members that is consistent. Either we agree on it. Or consistent with the presentation I made as your chair on town meeting floor. And the vote of the majority of the planning board with no recommendation on town meeting floor. I think all the planning board members can see that based on the no recommendation by the planning board at the last annual town meeting. We made ourselves clear. That we weren't against the bylaw. We were against the way. It was written and the need for more clarity and reduced numbers and needs to go for special permits. They still passed it for all intent and purposes unanimously. So I I'm. I'm of the nature, quite frankly, that we take no recommendation. I'd rather see that than than go too far. And not recommend it at all. I think that's sending a signal probably that. We don't like the bylaw at all, which has been inconsistent. We like the bylaw, however, it really needs. Most of the members, it needs tweaking. To Bonnie's question. And Olga, but I think this is part of it. This is. And David, David Rowe was right. When we passed the AA DU bylaw years ago. They didn't come out of the woodwork the first year. They didn't come out of the woodwork the second year. It took time for everyone to understand the bylaw and proceed to go and start building up. The units. And we have, the number has not changed. We've we've, the AA DU has had reached in its prime. 17 units. The best of my knowledge. And I, this comes back a little bit to David is is. With. Whomever is monitoring. The programs, meaning the AA DU and the ADU. We're down to the best of my knowledge as of September. Seven out of 17 AA DU units. I had said we're going to lose them with this bylaw. I'm not throwing in anybody's face. I'm just saying the number has now dwindled and it's been constantly going down and went from 17 now to seven. That was the last number I knew. I have not heard, quite frankly. Any input to the planning board. And I understand we've gone through some building inspectors, but I have not heard. From the building department or from whoever's in charge, how many ADU bylaw or ADU. Structures. Have these certificates in the town of Wellfleet. I think it is a minimum number and probably not over two.
I think it might be three.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty darn close. Of those three, and maybe Sharon, you maybe you've got the number, um, and I don't think it's. I think it's relative, but it's not really relative. If any of those three were previously AA DU units and did they simply switch?
Well, Olga's was.
I'm sorry, Olga's was, yes, I know.
I believe Olga's was.
Yeah, so there's at least, there's at least one that switched. So that leaves us two. I think. To planning board members. And not a Bonnie's point that it hasn't, it hasn't been abused. It's by town, it's by town water, it's by septic. Ability. We have seen that when you have a zoning bylaw on the books. When we have all good intentions of a bylaw on the books. Those that want to. And potentially want to abuse it. Find ways to abuse it. And unfortunately. We can hope that no one's going to abuse it. But we won't know until the moment when somebody walks into the building inspector and says, I want to build 10. Units on my property. And the next door neighbor has absolutely zero notification. When that happens and changes the environment totally. So without going over this and over it, I think it's, I think the bylaw, no. I know personally the bylaw is going to pass and then we're probably passing unanimously again, or pretty darn close to it. Whether or not. We approve. Or whether or not we take no recommendation. So. That's my reasoning behind it and I I was trying to put some answers to some of your. Some others input members, but. I think since nobody else is is put any input into this, Sharon. That probably the planning board, I can close it to the. General public and reel it back to the planning board and say, okay, based on all of this. Based on the fact that that article passed unanimously. This is a housekeeping item that is not going to change the intent whatsoever. All it is going to do is to make sure that what was passed last year by the town meeting. That no building inspector can interpret it any differently than what it was voted for. And that is simply by right, as many numbers as you can get on the property you're entitled to. So this is just changing. Singular to plural and a couple of other things of that nature. It doesn't. Take any steps that the planning board would have wanted to, that wanted to see regarding this article. As far as by right limitations. And pushing it over to special permit for other reasons. So is there any, just to get this off and get moving here, is there anybody that want, any planning board members who want to make a motion? Because we need to make a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion.
David, go ahead. David or Beth, which one, which one do you want to go?
Oh, Beth, go ahead, go ahead, Beth. Well, I'll make the motion and not. Not to recommend it. Okay.
Okay.
So I'll take the draconian position, Beth. I think that I'll make the recommendation to not recommend.
I'm agreeing with you.
Not recommend.
Yeah, not recommend.
Rather than no.
No recommendation.
Yeah, no, yeah, no recommendation.
Okay, that's different from not recommending, no recommendation. I want to make sure it's.
Not recommending. Yeah, I, no, not recommending.
Go in the middle ground, middle ground.
Okay, I'll take, I'll go the extreme position and see how that tests the waters that way if I get a second.
Okay, so your motion is not to recommend.
Correct.
All right, that's on the floor. Is there any second? Okay, I gave you enough time to speak up. It didn't pass.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Anyone want to make a motion?
A move that we may take no action, that we do not recommend or condone.
All right, take no, simply do no action. Okay. Any second.
I'll second it.
I didn't know if anybody else did, but it's been seconded. Discussion.
Seconded.
Okay, discussion on. No action. I'm going to go to Bonnie first because Bonnie was the first one. I already know with David and. So Bonnie, any discussion from you on no recommendation?
Think what all we're doing is recommending or not the wording changes. And the wording changes do improve in the bylaw. So I would. After we finish voting on the no recommend, on whatever it is, no recommendation, I would like to make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, if it passes. We have. Five members. If it passes with no recommendation with three members. You can't make another motion. So. Just to let you know, Bonnie, just I took a quick count just to confirm, okay? All right, Olga.
Um, no comment. I'm I'm not in favor of the motion.
Okay, all right. Beth, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, David, any further discussion?
Uh, no, I think that's good. Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is to take no action, no recommendation. All those in favor, raise your hand.
I'm raising my hand, Jerry. I'm raising my hand, Jerry.
Okay, Beth?
I'm raising my hand, yeah.
Beth, yes?
Yes.
David Rau, yes?
Yes.
Myself, yes? Bonnie? Olga?
No.
Okay. Karen, that vote is sweet or two? No recommendation?
Got it.
Got it, okay. Alright. That continuation of the public hearing is closed, and we will move on. Planning board members, to this point though, before I close it, and this goes to the two that voted against, and the three of us that voted in favor, I still will make the presentation on town meeting floor, and the reasoning it passed is it's consistent with our original decision to take no recommendation because of other problems. I, I see your point, Bonnie. Um, it is, is a, it's clerical, but I still feel strongly enough in my mind that the clerical aspect of it still, I don't feel like voting for it, it gives it credibility. We've already cleared up what it's supposed to be. So, um, we'll just see. I, I, I know it's gonna go probably unanimous. Olga?
Yeah.
Um, what will it take for us to review the bylaw so that it meets the needs that you think, you know, you, we fix what you think is missing? Because I don't, I don't have problems with it. But I keep hearing that it needs to be changed, and as of now, we have a codification of our bylaws. So we don't have to wait until that's done to spend some time reviewing it, if we, if we feel it's necessary.
I don't, I don't know when, at least with my experience, when you get a vote of this nature on town meeting floor, on a zoning bylaw, which requires three quarters, um, two thirds vote, and you, for all intent and purposes, you are so close to a unanimous decision on town meeting floor. That is very difficult to go back and open up and rewrite. I, I think-
Until it screws up.
It, that was gonna come right-
The contractor, that was gonna come right out of my mouth, David. Well, like the contractor bylaw, Jerry, until it screws up, then people, the shit hits the fan, and this is what will happen.
And I think-
So, I'm waiting for it to happen, even if I have to do it myself.
I think, to David's point, I think at this point in Wealthley, the sentiment is, the sentiment is strongly in favor of the ADU as it was written and passed at town meeting floor.
As Jim Jones would like it.
And I think that,
Because they don't understand-
We could work on it, we could tweak it, but I'm not sure, based on the fact, Olga, that it hasn't been used enough, that the general public is not convinced, and unfortunately, you know, sometimes the only thing that convinces them is when it goes down the wrong road.
Yeah.
I think at this point, there are a number of factors that are leading the townspeople to say we really need to dive into putting a number on it, making anything over one a special permit, whatever it is. I, I think that it's certainly not something, just because we have codification, that makes it easy to draw the bylaw. That's not the point. I mean, the, the basic, the basic premise, uh, the basic bylaw is in place. Tweaking it is simply changing the number that it's not unlimited, that there is a number in there, and then anything over that number would have to go for a special permit. But I don't think the time is, in my opinion at this point, the time is not right for the planning board to dive into something that was placed on the warrant by someone else and passed unanimously that it warrants us diving in at the present time. I would rather, I was more concerned, quite frankly, in the, on the ADU, I was more concerned with wiping out the AADU, because now we're down to seven. That's a serious hit. And if we only have two new ADUs, where are the rest of the eight or nine units? They're just still free throwing out, free flowing out.
They're Airbnb, baby.
They're doing exactly what they wanna do. And, and again, it comes back to, we're passing, and then, and I'm, I'm going just to this bylaw, because I don't wanna go general, because it's not on the agenda. So I'm speaking basically just to this ADU bylaw. In my mind, we still haven't got a handle on control. The left hand does not know what the right hand is doing. We don't know how many units are out there. We haven't cleaned up the fact and put the pressure on the missing AADU units to come back into the fold and present us with contracts, or simply write a year round lease and convert over to an ADU. If they had done that, we would have lost eight units, AADU, but we would have increased eight units on the ADU. But we haven't done that. And so it comes back to the same situation as, and Sharon mentioned this. The ADU, in my mind, is a bylaw trying to achieve more rental units for people that are going to work in Wealthley. That, I think, was the premise. It wasn't necessarily the creation, or I wasn't hoping it was the create, the idea of creating more rentable units just whoever wanted to rent on a year round basis. It was really kinda earmarked for those that couldn't find housing in Wealthley to make it more readily available to find a rental unit.
They're rented to my son who sublets. There goes your control.
Exactly.
That's exactly right, David. That's exactly right.
We have no control on it.
It's, it's going, it's going right now, and it's really very early until we get, as I say, more-
Until it can be fully be exploited. Until we can fully exploit it and ruin it, it'll stay the same. But let's ruin it first, and then we'll change it. Because that's what will happen.
Where I was going is until we can really control and get a handle on where did the AADUs go?
You, you know where they went, Jerry? I'll tell you where they went. We got rid of that bylaw. There'll be no action on those. If there's no action on those in five years, those become legal duplexes by right with no control, so that's where they go. Period. That's it, we lost them.
If we see the, if we see the ADUs being used more readily, and I understand there's some good points on this, what I'm about to say, and some bad points, but, and there always is. If we see more ADUs being pulled by owners for family members.
The cover story.
Then we kinda open the door and say, okay, there's your, is that a loophole? And is that family member using it and subleasing it? Because there's no way the board will help, there's no way the building inspector, there's no way the assistant TA, whoever's running the show, is gonna go out
They can't-
Check it.
No.
It's kind of-
And they can't deny it.
David is talking a lot, and I've had my hand up for like five minutes.
Okay, so David, so-
Shut up, right?
I didn't say that, I just said David. So those are some of the problems. I, I think we need to, to work through this and get it working correctly. And then, in a year or two, the planning board can seriously look at it with information to say, alright, it hasn't been abused, leave it alone. It has been abused, this is what the abuse seems to be doing, or being, being used for, maybe we need to jump in. But I think at this particular moment in time, I think it needs to be out there to see what's going to happen. But we really need to focus more on, instead of writing a bylaw, getting the individuals who are responsible to take care of this to do their job.
So-
Good luck with that one.
Well, so, so-
Can Bonnie speak?
Well, wait a minute, Bonnie?
I mean, so, first of all, I mean, and we'd have to go back the minutes from a year ago, and, and maybe Sharon, maybe one of you remembers. But when we were first discussing this, and Alfred was part of those discussions, I wish he were here. I mean, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how many active AADUs there were. And as far as my memory is, that in fact, the number had already decreased considerably from fifteen before we ever had a a vote at town meeting. So we can't say that passing the AD, I don't think we can say that passing the ADU bylaw somehow lost us AADU uh, units, because the tax break, which is something Olga has repeatedly brought up, you know, the tax break is still there. You know, it's, that's a, that's a state program, you don't need a bylaw for it. You know, so, I mean, so, so that's the first thing, you know?
Only being used by seven people.
Right, but I think it was very, very few back way. I think people had already dropped out, and the, the whole argument that Sharon and her colleagues were making is that, that is that people were not renewing because of the bureaucratic requirements.
No, they weren't renewing, they weren't renewing because nobody was following up in management to control it, to get them back in. And I see the same-
Then we need to talk to the new town manager.
That's, that's right, and I think the same thing is, the same thing is going to happen, I believe. But time, only time will tell, I believe the same thing is going to happen with the ADUs.
Well, we don't know that, and I, I guess, I think that pressure can-
Sorry, Bonnie, but I do know that, because I've been in this for thirty-two years, and I've seen the way we operate, I've seen the bylaws go downhill, because nobody manages them the way they're supposed to be managed.
Yeah, but it's our job to just-
Only time will tell, only time will tell, that's all. Alright.
I would like to ask-
No, wait a minute, Bonnie's got another question, I think.
Can I, 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 can I, uh, through you, uh, could just ask Sharon whether the, the housing, um, and I, I, forgive me that I don't have all the names of the committees correctly, but whether the Housing Commission, I believe it is, whether, whether you are whether you know why people are not renewing the AADs, and also whether you are bringing up the enforcement issues with the new town officials, including the, including the new, uh, building commissioner.
Can I answer?
Uh, yeah, Sharon, sure.
Uh, yeah, the new building commissioner is, uh, and, and I understand that, that building commissioners have not been real stable. I hope that this one is, because I really, really like him. But the, he is determined to manage the ADUs. The AADUs are being managed by, um, someone, let's see, that it's Rebecca Roughly, no, it, what's her name now? I'm sorry. Um, the, the assistant town manager, town administrator.
Becky.
Becky, yeah, yeah, it is Roughly. Um, she has delegated that to one of the administrative staff, and they are following up on current AADUs. I do not know the numbers that are currently active. Um, and that would be good to know. And we are also having, been having some conversations with CDP about looking at better management, but we would have to pay them. I mean, that's the thing, it's really, what we need is a housing coordinator, like most other towns around here. They would do that, but if in, in lack of that, you know, we could pay the CDP to do it, and that would be consistent. And so we're looking at different ways to try to manage this. And, you know, I, I do understand that it's a problem, but it's not more of a problem than all of the illegal apartments that we have out there, many of which are rented year round, and, and many of which are rented seasonally. So, you know, we have lots of problems.
Yep, okay. I think we've
Right.
Blogged the horse?
Yeah, I think we've rode the horse. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. Preliminary modification to subdivision San Piper Hill. Anyone here for that?
Are we gonna get a presentation?
Is, is Peter Stewart who's on here, the, representing that one?
Jerry, I don't understand it, so I'd really like to hear from somebody who can explain it.
Well, I can explain it, but quite frankly, it's not my position to explain it, it should be, um, it should be, no, and, and, uh, it, it is, uh-
Where's the petitioner?
The, well, it's out of most, uh, land surveyor, it's, um, it's, um-
Donald Poole, right?
Don Poole.
Yeah, is he here? Is he here to present it?
Who's P? Karen?
It says Peter Stewart.
Peter Stewart, I don't know who he is.
Well, I do, but it's something, well, I, I, depends on which Peter Stewart it is, but, um, no, Don Poole is the one that sent this in. I don't see him on. This is a preliminary discussion, it has not been submitted to the planning board. I'm, along with Beth, I, I I went out and briefly looked at it. And I have some questions, I, I can understand what, what he's asking for, but I also don't see a particular road that's ever been constructed. So, at this point, since there's nobody here to discuss it that made this present request, then I'm just gonna move on. And-
That sounds fair enough.
Alright, um, correspondence. Wow. Request from Commonwealth of Mass Department Housing Communication Development. Karen, they're looking for, um, they're looking for-
They're looking for data.
Yeah, and didn't, isn't this the data I suggested that we send over to Becky?
Yep, and I did.
And you did, and I know she got it, because I was, I was in the office when she made a copy of it, and so therefore it's, it's been forwarded to Becky, because she is the one that I believe has the numbers, or should be able to put the numbers on there, and we have, as a planning board, have no idea. It's the same for the request on behalf of the town of Orleans, permits, multifamily condos uh, last two or three years. We really have no idea on that. Uh, did you forward that over to Becky?
I believe I did.
I believe I did.
Okay. Although, I think those are almost in conjunction with wanting to know how many multifamily condos and stuff, but we just don't have that. So that's, that was the only two correspondents? That came in.
Yes, sir.
Um, what you have for preliminary review, planning board members, is a floodplain preliminary plan that Hillary and that Sharon House agreed months and months ago to draw up and work on instead of the planning board. And to, for the planning board, it made a lot more sense for them to do that. I will admit right up front that floodplain stuff is just a little out of my, you ask me about subdivisions, you ask me about zoning bylaws, I'm, I think I've got a pretty good handle on it, but floodplain is, is someone that, like Alfred or David Mead Fox or someone that's really into it. So I'm thinking, planning board members, that in the best interest of information for the planning board, that I asked Beth and Sharon to be at the meeting on June fifteenth and give us an oral presentation that'll give us time as members to really look in, into it, read it over, but have them come in and make a presentation to the board, tell us what, let us know what's in here that has been changed from the existing floodplain, what, and things of that nature. So I think a presentation from, from Sharon and Hillary, or if Hillary decides to Sharon, to, to give us a, a physical update, so we can ask some pertinent questions and, and hear it from the individuals that really have a much better handle on it than, quite frankly, than I do. If Alfred was here, I could ask Alfred because he deals with that front of conservation with his, with his, um, he walls, he walls, we've got the walls and things of it, renourishment and all of those things. So I would, I would lean to, to Alfred strongly. So I will make sure that the fifteenth is here. But are, are the other board members, Olga?
Isn't there some deadline that we have to meet in order for, like the state is making us approve this or not, and it has to go on the, on the warrant? If not the present warrant, but the next one?
No, this is not going on the present warrant.
No, but is there a deadline?
Over in Dunwoody. Hillary is hoping, in the conversation I had with Hillary, that we can work towards getting it on the fall meeting.
Fall town meeting.
However, she has said, if it doesn't make the fall town meeting, then we can get it on in the next annual meeting.
And the state is not requiring us to do something by?
State is saying, we'd like to see the, I think Sharon can give us more of an update, but basically, if we're working on it, that's all the state cares about. But so time, unlike some things, time of, is of the essence, is not a situation in this particular matter. That's not to say I'm putting it on the back burner, but I've heard, I've had the discussion with Hillary and she has gotten the first, and she mentions in this, it's a preliminary plan. Um, and that is a work in progress. We generally, as a planning board, only meet once. Most of the time, June, July, August, because we're all going in different directions and then start up in September. So that's why I'm trying to get a handle, um, at our next meeting to see if I can get Sharon and Hillary here to, to give us an overview and then see where we have to go from there, whether it's even feasible to get it on annual, I mean, I'm sorry, the fall town meeting or the next annual. Normally, these kind of things don't go on fall town meetings. Fall town meetings were set up for emergency situations, not for the ordinary. Normally, we would not put a zoning bylaw on the fall town meeting. However, the only zoning bylaw that will be on the annual town meeting this year will be the contractor's yard. Any other zoning article, for example, the ADU, will be on the fall town.
Uh, I did.
We're protected.
I did read through it and saw some things that I had questions about. Apparently, this is not the time to bring them up. Could I unilaterally talk with Hillary and say, what did you mean by this use of a checklist? Where's this checklist? Uh, why are you using Board of?
No, I can, I can go there, no. The last thing Hillary wants to do is get every member calling, or those members start calling and she's starting answering questions, that's not what she's there for. Um, so I think what you can do is probably if you've got some pertinent questions, Olga, write them, send them off to Karen. And Karen can forward those over as a heads up to Hillary and Sharon for that June meeting. Um, and if any other members have a question specifically, it goes, it needs to go through that procedure, give it to Karen. Um, she can then forward those over, um, sooner rather than later, because June fifteenth is getting closer and closer, the summer is upon us. And then she can address those questions at one time. Um, so I think that's the best way to do it.
And what is June fifteenth now?
June fifteenth will be our first meeting in June.
Oh, right, okay.
Okay.
So it'll be after town meeting?
Yes.
So I, so it, is it, is it just a waste of time to, so I, you know, I have some very basic questions, but maybe it's not the time. I mean, I just, what I didn't understand, since this is a wellfleet zoning bylaw, is if the only purpose of this is to bring this into conformity with the Massachusetts State and US floodplain laws. You know, or, yeah, I guess I, because at one point, it, it talks about the, the US laws. Yeah, right, on six fourteen six. Variances to the flood resistant standards is found in this Massachusetts State Building Code. They only be issued by Massachusetts State Building Code Appeals Board. So I guess that my question is about the conformity, about whether this has been written to conform with the Massachusetts floodplain building codes.
I believe it has, and those are questions we would ask Sharon and Hillary, but Hillary was, oh, how do I say this? I'm certainly not gonna minimize Hillary's input in this, but Hillary's input probably was oriented towards wellfleet. Sharon's input was not only tying in specific items for wellfleet, but updating wellfleets to the state.
Is this Sharon Rule Lager or another Sharon?
No, 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 this is no, Sharon. She is working for Barnstable County in representing the Barnstable County, because she's working on more than one town, but she's tailoring each town. As you said, each town has certain specific problems that may, that probably mean to address that the state just can't use a broad brush and say, okay, this is for everything. So she's tailoring it to wellfleet. And I think those are the kind of questions that need to come or be answered from Sharon and Hillary. But the more questions that planning board members can put in writing and get to Karen and then forward up to Sharon and to Hillary, we kind of get a jump on where they will go on June fifteenth.
Oh, I, I guess I don't want to waste Hillary's time with questions that maybe may be obvious to other people. So I just, I, can we just discuss this briefly? Just, it's just so that I make sure that if I have some questions, you know, they're not dumb questions?
I don't think, okay.
Yeah, so.
I, I am not prepared to answer any of your questions. This is not something, when we did the original floodplain, the Board of Health wrote it. Board of Health cannot put a zoning bylaw in, it has to then come back to the planning board. It doesn't have to, it could be put in by petition, but, but the, the due process. Be careful, Jerry, be very careful.
Yeah.
I, I just, you know.
Proper process, the normal process would be for the Conservation Committee, if it's a zoning bylaw, to push it over to the planning board and run it through a public hearing and get our input and then come up with a final draft and we have a hearing. Um, rather than lone wolf it and go in as a petitioned article. They're following the normal, proper procedure. There is, Bonnie, to answer your question, I'm gonna reduce this to ridiculous, there is no stupid question. There is no stupid question, because if you're thinking, if in your mind, you've got a question, the chances are real good, somebody on town meeting floor is gonna have the same question. So.
Oh, no, no, Jerry, there's gonna be five people that are gonna have the same question.
Exactly, so, so consequently, it, I've learned, Bonnie, that, you know, when new members come on, you, you, sometimes you look at new members and say, okay, they're gonna have to feel the way through for a while. And the interesting thing I have found, and it's, it's illuminating, quite frankly, is they don't have, new members a lot of times don't have an idea, a preempted idea or a preexisting idea. And they'll throw something out that they think is a stupid question and all of a sudden, those of us that have been a planning board for fifteen or twenty years, look at that individual and say, oh my God, why didn't we think of it? So there is no stupid question, because what they think is a stupid, with a silly question can very easily lead to a very pointed question that somebody else overlooked completely. So don't feel that.
The only stupid question, the only stupid question is the one you don't ask.
There you go, David, very well put.
Okay.
Let's hear the question.
Yeah, so, so I just want to make sure that I understand the main thrust of this correctly. You know, and so the main thrust is that when, is that basically, any, well, first of all, I didn't see any maps. So I don't know which parts of wellfleet are in which hazard zone. But it sounds like, it sounds like any development at all, as defined here, that is happening in a floodplain zone will not be permitted without a special permit and all of those conditions that they laid that the request would have to meet.
Right, so that's, that's a question, that's a valid question. And, and that leads to, okay, let's say, let's say, for example, that an entrance road to a subdivision, there happens to be a low point of fifteen feet that is below or in the floodplain. And that's where that road is coming in. So it may be, in fact, a situation where the subdivision is fine that we govern, but we may have to kick it over to, just like we do to the Board of Health on water, before we can have a public hea- hearing on a subdivision, just to make sure that they don't want any tests or anything done. To say, okay, we've got to mitigate and correct, not correct, I'm sorry. We've got to mitigate the damage on that fifteen feet of road section that's below or in the floodplain to get to the rest of the subdivision. They're not gonna close the subdivision down, but what they're going to do is say, okay, you need to trench it, you need to tube it, you need to do something. So these are all valid questions that we have to ask and say, okay, can, if we, if we kick it over, do we have to kick it over? What's the trigger to kick it over? The maps change, just like the MESA maps, all the time. Hmm, so. That's probably why you don't see a map at this particular moment in time, but there's a good question, is they may be working on the next section, not knowing when this is gonna go through, she just didn't cite any maps. The question I'm sure Alfred's gonna present is, what is the difference? Is there any difference between our current floodplain and this floodplain as far as elevations go?
Yeah.
Those are the hard questions I don't have the answers for.
Yeah, elevation probably might change or velocity zones might change, but velocity zones are somewhat predictable and they shouldn't change.
Good.
There should be a map, Bonnie, uh, the building department should have at least one on file to identify what the zones are, that's readable. Because he has to make that determine, that determination when he's, uh, reviewing permits in those areas. So he needs to know whether it's an A-zone, which is limited risk versus a V-zone, which is a velocity area, which is substantial risk, and that could affect the height and the placement of the building. And the building inspector should be, excuse me, commissioner, should be able to direct you to that, just for an overview. They won't be deadly accurate, but they'll be accurate enough for him to make a determination and for you to look at. And those are very helpful to look at.
Okay, yep, Bonnie.
Yep.
Bonnie?
My, my other question was, it, it, it seemed like, you know, in, in one place, it talks about this, the special flood hazard areas that the maps are the one percent chance of flood, of, of floods. Right? So the one percent chance of, so that the districts are, anything, is any piece of land that has a one percent chance of flooding?
On the hundred year flood, flood cycle, and that could, that's determined by elevation. Usually it's like thirty, usually it's like thirteen feet, uh, which encompasses a lot of the harbor, obviously. But, um, you know, it does stretch inland into spots that would surprise you where they are. You know, so a lot of it is determined by that contour line. And that's the base flood elevation, I think it's, it's consistent at thirteen feet.
I think it is.
Anything below that, yeah, anything below that, you're, you're in a little doo doo, but, um, that's sort of the quick and easy read on it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm just confused because on the one hand, something that is the one percent chance is in the floodplain, but on the other, there's some other language where it talks about the mean high tide, which is that, that something would need to be constructed above.
Would have to be.
Above the mean high tide, and the mean high tide is way below, I mean, it's way lower than the one percent floodplain. I mean, the we, the mean high tide must be many feet closer to the coast than the one percent floodplain for low lying areas, right? closer to the coast than the 1% floodplain for low-lying areas, right?
I don't think so. Yeah.
Those are questions directly asked to Sharon and to Hillary. You're not going to get those answers tonight.
And Bonnie, honestly, it's best to look at a map with those questions, because then you can see it. It's more of a visual thing. You know, it's hard to describe, but if you can see it, see the map, it presents a clearer picture, because it's very confusing stuff.
And since we are going to be at a live meeting again, I will get to Hillary and to Sharon to see if they can have some floodplain maps at that meeting on the 15th.
That would be great.
They could share their screen, or, yeah, something, yeah, even if we're not.
Not on Zoom, we're on, we're live, we're in a meeting, just like we used to be. So consequently, that's a place where people can get up one at a time if they want to, or she can get on a screen, depending on what that Zoom is set up to do. And as I said earlier, we're all going to learn. But I'm going to ask that she have some kind of mapping at that, at that meeting. So it's a heck of a lot easier to read a hard copy in person than it is at a Zoom meeting like this. Especially for this kind of subject matter. All right.
Yeah.
I have one addition, or whatever, revision. The public documents list. I would like the last line to say, email from Olga on 95 Lawrence Road. I'm not, I'm sorry, yeah. I don't, actually, I don't know. There was an email where I was answering some questions and letting people know that I didn't have answers on some other questions, which I can still talk about, but I didn't, it wasn't comments, it was an email. Other emails are listed, so I wanted to be clear that I, what was presented in the documents was an email.
So we can still vote on the minutes with that one amendment, right?
Right. Yeah. I move that we approve the minutes with that one amendment.
The amendment is to include the email on 95 Lawrence Road?
Instead of comments, 95 Lawrence Road, email from Olga on 95 Lawrence Road. Or forget the "on", I guess "on" is the way she used it earlier with the email from Yestin on name change. It's housekeeping.
Okay. I'll have a look at it. Any second? Bonnie, a second?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 I wasn't there.
But you received the packet.
Oh, yes, yes.
It was an email.
Yes, I'm sorry. Aye, aye, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
unanimous. All right. Next meeting is the 15th. It is at the Senior Center, 7 o'clock. Pick up your packets.
Liaison report?
Right, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, but I don't think there's any liaisons.
My question is, who are official liaisons? My understanding is that Al is the liaison to the Housing Authority. Is that, are there, Alfred, are there any others?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
You are to the 95 Lawrence.
Task force has disbanded.
No, it hasn't.
To my knowledge, we don't meet.
That doesn't, okay, I'll go, because you don't meet, doesn't mean it's been disbanded. It has not officially been disbanded.
I thought it had.
Get that out. No, it has not been disbanded. There has been no vote to disband that 95 Lawrence.
Who would vote that? The Select Board, or?
Select Board would vote it.
Okay.
Yep, because they appoint. So as of now, it is still active. Whether they meet or don't meet, that doesn't matter. It's still an active... It's still active. I would imagine it will be disbanded, but that's not up to me, that's not up to me.
And it's my understanding that Alfred does not go to the Housing Authority meetings, but could we ask him to report or change the person who's the liaison?
Yeah, I can ask him to make a report.
Okay, because I'd like to know what they're doing. And can we put codification on the next agenda, or some agenda?
I don't even know if it's on the annual town meeting yet.
I don't think it is, but I believe there's a draft of it now. Oh, so we would only look at it if there's...
The draft is only to change the numbers. That is all.
It's not, it's not, yeah, it's very small, baby steps.
Right.
Just to change the number.
And I keep hearing that we cannot spend the time to look at the existing bylaws because we don't have it re-numbered, but...
That's what I said. I said that when the codification happens, there will be information that we will have readily available from the codification company that we don't have now.
They're doing more work besides just changing the numbers.
Correct, and we'll have access to more information, actually, a bigger database.
The codification, okay. That, this can't be, I'm sorry, but this cannot be discussed at this meeting, because it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, all right.
Can we put codification on the agenda, so there's clarity for next?
I can put, I can put codification on there for a particular question, yes. But until the codification is on, I'm sorry, I really think... I'll put it on the agenda for June 15th, so some of these questions can be addressed. They cannot be addressed at this moment in time.
I understand.
Good. All right. All right. Meeting adjourned. See you all on the 15th. Take care, have a good Memorial Day.
You're at town meeting.
Oh, yes. Thanks for the memory, for reminding me. Have a good night.